I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, May 6th to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, would you rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, for our first order of business, we move to proclamations and presentations. First proclamation is declaring May 10th as Small Business Day. With Ms. Linda Smith from the Chamber of Commerce, please join me at the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I am good.
Awesome.
Thank you for coming.
A pleasure.
You know, small business really makes Lakewood run. We have literally hundreds, in fact, thousands of small businesses in Lakewood, growing every day, in no small part due to the great efforts of our Chamber of Commerce. So, we'd like to recognize those folks who keep people working and keep our economy humming. Whereas the city of Lakewood recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit of small businesses that keep the state and American economy growing and stronger. And whereas there are 150,000 small businesses with employees in Washington alone, with an additional 400,000 small businesses comprised of sole owners. And whereas there are over 4,000 small businesses in the city of Lakewood that account for a significant share of the city's economic production and hiring. And whereas it is the collaborative mission of the city, working in partnership with the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, to help our businesses grow and create new jobs within the city by providing exemplary programs, referrals, resources, counseling, and championing on behalf of the small business community. And whereas the city of Lakewood appreciates the support provided to our small businesses by the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, now therefore, the city of Lakewood Council do hereby proclaim Friday, May 10th, 2019, as Small Business Day in the city of Lakewood, and urges all citizens to acknowledge and support our small businesses throughout the year. Proclaim this 6th day of May, 2019. Don Anderson, Mayor. Bi-local, right?
Bi-local, that's right.
Would you like to say a few words, Linda?
Sure. Thank you.
Well, I'll keep this brief. You've all undoubtedly paid attention to this last legislative session, and we're still saying, "What the what just happened?" The small business community is literally taking a kick in the gut. There is a 20% increase in the BNO tax for service providers, which means that our small businesses are going to have an even more difficult time maintaining their ability to hire additional people and provide the services that are needed. So, please keep that in mind as you vote next year. But I would like to thank the city of Lakewood for continuing to not have a BNO tax in the city of Lakewood. So, thank you, council members. We really appreciate your support of the small business community.
Thank you, Linda.
Can I get a hug?
You get a hug. Not everybody gets a hug.
Okay.
She's not an employee, so I can do that. The attorney doesn't laugh. We now move to a proclamation declaring May 12th to 18th as National Police Week. Would Lieutenant Chris Westby please join me? I ran into Lieutenant Andy Gildenhouse by the jail today, and he offered me a free ride in.
I wouldn't take it. In his car.
Whereas each May during the week surrounding May 15th, our nation salutes the American women and men who put their lives on the line every day to maintain public safety and hold accountable those who break the law. And whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lakewood Police Department. And whereas nearly 59,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been killed in the line of duty, including four members of Lakewood Police Department. And whereas it is with heavy hearts that we mourn the heroes taken from us only because they chose to serve, and we rededicate ourselves to carrying forward their noble legacy. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas during National Police Week, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge on Washington, DC, to participate in a number of planned events which honor those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council officially recognizes May 12th to 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in the city of Lakewood, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. Proclaim this 6th day of May, 2019. Don Anderson, Mayor. Lieutenant? Say a few words?
I'd like to thank the city council and the city manager for this. It is an important week for us. It's a very somber week. It's important for us to remember those that we work with, have worked with, and those that we've lost. But something that everybody can do is just give a wave and a smile. It goes a long ways for those of us that are out here working. So, again, I'd like to thank everybody for this, and I'll step aside.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Got to put you up on the website. Now move to the youth council report. Who's up this week?
Hello, council. We're going to start with school reports from youth councils today. So, I'm Laniesta Mack, and I'm here for Harrison Prep. Currently, our middle schoolers and 10th graders are doing SBA, Smarter Balance, testing. IB exams for the seniors start tomorrow. Our drama club is going to be performing Fiddler on the Roof next week, I believe, as well as our art class, not art club, but art class has a art show this Wednesday. I was following with a choir concert. And prom is coming up, May 18th. Any questions?
Nope.
Hi, I'm Peyton Gomez, and I'll be representing Covenant High School. So, on April 26th, we had our annual talent show, which was a very fun event. We had about 12 acts, I think, and we had three different winners. And then currently, our choir is in Oregon because they're doing a short little choir tour where they're going to be performing at different nursing homes in the area. And then next week, we will be having our elections for our student council, our ambassadors in our National Honor Society, so that's exciting. And then the next Friday, the 17th, we will also be having our spring art show and choir concert. And then our next major event is going to be our graduation, which is June 7th, and I know all the seniors are looking forward to it. And then the freshmen through juniors will be leaving on the 12th. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Albert James, and I'll be giving the Lake School Report this evening. Our ASB is ironing out final details for our senior prom. It's taking place next Friday, the 17th, at Historic 1625 in Tacoma, and the theme is Fly Me to the Moon. Our JRTC program came back from their annual JRTC Cadet Leadership Camp, which took place at Camp Murray over the weekend. Cadets practice their leadership skills in live situations with other cadets from other schools in the South Puget Sound area. Our NHS program inducted new members last month, instilling their tradition of academic excellence and character development in future generations of Lancers. Advanced placement, yeah, advanced placement testing started today and continues through next Friday, the 17th. Our annual festival of the arts, Artesia, featuring art pieces for, excuse me, art pieces from art students and performances from brave individuals will take place Wednesday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM. And finally, all of our seniors are counting down the minutes until graduation, which is taking place Wednesday, June 5th, at 7:00 PM at the Tacoma Dome. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Elijah Raffles, and I will be giving you a summary of what happened at our Lakewood Youth Summit, titled the Lakewood Youth Future Academy that took place on April 13th. So, this took place at the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club, containing youth approximately from the ages of 12 to 18, or roughly 8th grade to senior in high school. We mainly took students from around the Clover Park School District and those in the broader Lakewood Tacoma Pierce County area. At the beginning, we had Mayor Anderson give the opening remarks, who introduced also our keynote speaker, Mr. Girose Ross. Throughout the day, we had four different breakout sessions students could attend. This consisted of adulting 101, which was a broad umbrella term for everything adulting, which primarily actually focused on finances, applying for jobs, scholarships, and that sort. We had civic leadership, which was led by the Boys and Girls Club themselves, health and well-being, which was led by Lakewood's Choice, and there is environmental justice led by the Young Women Empowered Group. There was food snacks and swag bags provided by the South Puget Intertribal Planning Agency, or SPIPA. And the youth council was able to debrief, and I actually have two copies of the notes if you'd like to look at the comments we gave.
If you'd give those to the clerk, she can copy them and maybe email them to the council so we all get to see them. Thanks.
Are there any questions?
Questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I'm curious as to how the civic leadership component was received. And I gather that young people could choose things that they do, and I was wondering how well-attended that was, and what feedback was sort of obtained from those that were participating.
So, for each of the breakout sessions, each of them contained roughly 20 to 30 students. For the civic leadership, they mainly focused on being able to talk to one another in a more civilized way, having civil discourse, being able to start up projects in their schools or in their local communities. And I know that from some of the attendees that I asked, they said that they appreciated being able to have this background information on how to do these things, because they planned probably undoing a project like this sometime in the future.
Did they have any observations about generally in society how civil discussions were?
I think everyone understood that in society, at least from how we all see it, is that it's very chaotic, it's very hectic, very uncivil, which is sad to say, but it's kind of the truth. And they took that to heart, knowing that coming to the Lakewood Youth Summit, that they could probably instill some change in those people who have those beliefs.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report. I'm anxious to hear how many registered for attendance, and then do you also plan on doing this year after year? I think it's a great idea, and I hope everybody walked away with something good from it. How many attendees roughly?
So, I can answer the second question. I'll let Albert, if you want to answer.
Sixty to seventy.
So, sixty to seventy attendees is how much we had attend the event. There was a good number of walk-ins, if I remembered correctly. So, we did dual registration, those who registered early and those who could walk in if they had a parent sign the release agreement form. We also plan on making this an annual event, potentially growing it every single year, moving to different venues, and probably expanding to the different people that we can pull into the event, so like the greater Pierce County area, pull people from Tacoma, and probably see where it goes from there.
So, this year was just concentrated on the Clover Park School District or Pierce County?
We originally focused our efforts on the high schools, the middle schools in the Clover Park School District area, and then did some outreach to Curtis, to Bethel, and all those schools in the area.
So, sixty is a pretty good number.
Yes.
That's good. So, I applaud all of you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. We now move to the Clover Park School District report with Director Paul Wagaman.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and councilmembers, and just delighted to be here tonight to update you on what's happening in Clover Park School District. Some of the youth have covered some of the things I'll cover, but I'll just touch on them briefly again. Start with the Facility Advisory Committee is exploring the possible recommendation to renovate the Clover Park High School. It's kind of a focal point of our community, and it's, there's some areas that need some improvement, and so that's one of the areas that we're going to start focusing on. So, continue to listen for more information on that as we move forward. Linda Smith talked about the legislature doing some things with taxes and all that kind of stuff. One of the things you'll hear us talking about now is the enrichment levy. The state's supposed to pay for basic education. The enrichment levy is the things that we, as a community, think we need to add to that to do those things. So, we're putting one of those things together to probably run it in February of 2020. So, holds accountable on that, but that's kind of how the things on levies are going at this point in time. May 6th to 10th, we'll be celebrating a certificate of employees of the district, so watch for some of those kind of things and some of those activities. We'll have an Employee of the Year on May 13th. Several community members went through all the applications for that, and there will be three different people picked for the different areas of that on May 13th, and so look forward to those names coming out. West Pierce Fire and Rescue recognized heroic actions of a Dour student. West Pierce Fire and Rescue honored a Dour Elementary student recently for her bravery and quick action when her younger brother started choking at school. Sophia received a life-saving award and a chief's coin from the fire chief, Jim Sharp. So, that was pretty exciting. Harrison Prep students take first place in two categories at the Multimedia Festival. Harrison, let's see, that was held on April 19th. Daniel Wade Roberts and Jesse Abes LaRosa won first place in the school-related video category, and Harrison Prep IB Film 2 class earned the top prize in the school news category. Pierce County Career Connections Multimedia Festival was held at Bates Technical College and featured students' work from 12 schools from around the state. The festival celebrated student creativity, visual communications, and provided an opportunity for students to engage in post-secondary multimedia career fields. Eight Clover Park and Lakes High School students qualified for the National DECA Conference. Again, I don't know if you follow DECA, but it's an area where it really helps our young people start getting career-ready opportunities, and this DECA program is amazing. If you visit some of our high schools, those DECA programs run some of the school stores and those kinds of things. Pretty amazing what they do. The other thing, we recently had the secondary students play together at a district band festival. So, at the McGavick Center, we had about 400 students. The first core band came down and did a little bit pre, and then all the students played. And so, you know, one of our goals in the district is that we, the creative arts, and it's very encouraging when you see the diversity. There was one sad thing, though, was Mr. Durth, the music teacher at Clover Park, he announced his retirement that day. It was interesting, several of the students gathered right around, and one of the young men with the mic says, "We love you, Mr. Durth." So, that's just one of the positives. "We love you, Mr. Durth." So, that's just one of the positive things about relationships between our teachers and our students. So, that was very encouraging. Lakes High School students, if you get an opportunity, will be displayed on May eighth over at St. Clair. There'll be some snacks there if you like those kinds of things, and have an opportunity to view the artwork that's done by our students. If you haven't been, I'd encourage you to go. I've gone in the past, and it's just amazing, some of the stunning work. Then, we have another exciting thing. May twenty-second will be our Arlington Project. So, we'll have our, I think they're going up to seven thousand, though, so they'll have seven thousand little markers out there on the field. So, they'll be busy, but it makes this real statement to our community that we support our military, we support our history, and so those are good things. May twenty-fifth will be a snow makeup day. As we had, as you all know, we had a little bit of snow this year. And then, May sixteenth is our last late start of the year. I don't know if you all know about what late starts are all about, but it's our opportunity to have the professional development first thing in the morning. It's the least disruptive for our students and the district, and so the teachers get a chance to work together and get their information passed, and they do that on these late starts. And from my perspective, it is work the best of all the different programs we've had to make sure that our staff and everything are ready to go to teach our students to the top levels. Kindergarten registration is underway, so people need to get out there, and if they've got kindergartners, let us know that they're bringing children next year, so we can get that all planned for. And then, it was already mentioned, smarter balance testing is in progress, and so they'll be doing that for the grades three through eight, and then they'll just continue on, and then they'll do the national science, or the science test will be part of that. And so, those are all things that people always want to hear, you know, what are the numbers? So, this is the objective measures that come off. Sometimes people ask the question, "How come we have so many computers?" Well, most of this, all these tests are done on computers. So, having computers, having a good network and all those things is very important to our district, so that we can get this done. And I think that concludes my comments for this evening. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Wagaman.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Thank you. Thank you for mentioning, thank you for mentioning DECA. Someone very close to me went on that trip, and then this year, it was a newly resurgent DECA at Clover Park High School also went. So, it was a big deal, and the Clover Park group did very well, is my understanding on that event. So, it was a good trip.
Thank you.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I'm just curious, how old is Clover Park High School?
How old is the building?
Yes.
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head. I know Stan Johnson was on the school board when that happened. If you remember Senator Johnson, Stan, that's when they built that, and they sold the radio station and built that building. So, I'm guessing late seventies?
I'm just curious, since we're going to do some remodeling, if it was...
Well, and we have to do something. It doesn't meet all the things to, so we can have the connectivity for networking and those kind of things. One of the things we did in our listening, as we hired a new superintendent, some of the comments, well, some of the people at Clover Park felt they maybe were second-class, and so we're saying, "Hey, how can we spruce it up to," you know, because I think there's a lot of good things in that building. We've done some air conditioning, we've done some other things to keep it going, but we want to improve that, and so that's where we think we're going to come ask the citizens to help us support that.
Thank you.
I might be able to add to that. At the time, I was a new attorney back to town, and our firm represented the television station that purchaser. It was KCPQ thirteen. And so, it was, I think about nineteen eighty-three. If I recall correctly, there were, that was done without any bonding or tax levy. There were proceeds from a fire. There was some of the facilities, like the swimming pool, that were undamaged, and the, a combination of private, smaller private gift and the proceeds from the sale of the TV station built it. And so, it was, it was pretty limited on the funding. It's a touch-and-go whether it could be done, because at the time, there wasn't any big state matching money to make it happen. So, it's been, it was kind of a little bit done on the cheap, I think, and it was nearly forty years ago. So...
Mr. Bransdanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wagaman, you mentioned on May thirteenth was the day that your employees of the year would be identified.
Yes.
Is there an actual event, or is it something that's going to just take place within your board meeting, or what's the, what, I guess, what's the ceremonial activity on that day?
It's the day of the board meeting, and what we do is, we normally have that event that starts prior to that, and they normally have cookies and punch, and then they go through, and we have, introduce everyone, and then the announcement is made who's there. So, it's about an hour before the board meeting, it'll be done.
Something like a five, five P. M.
Well, let's see, what, the thirteenth?
If you could, let me know.
It's wonderful to have these little devices. They have all this stuff on there. Starts at five o'clock, five to six on the thirteenth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wagaman.
Just a brief question, Mr. Wagaman, about your comment on the potential enrichment levy. What has been the impact to the district's budget as a result of the state fully funding education in the last legislative session? I know that certain districts like Tacoma were really significantly impacted, from what you hear on TV, with regard to educational salaries and that kind of thing, to the point where they're going to look at layoffs and such. Has Clover Park been similarly impacted or not, or is the enrichment levy truly anticipated to be enrichment programs?
Well, the bottom line is, the legislature doesn't want us to use levy money to do basic education tasks. So, that's basically the law. That's what they want to hold us to. At this point in time, when we negotiated our contract last year, the goal was to make sure that we had a sustainable budget. And to the best of my knowledge, we're right there. And so, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we stay within those numbers, because it doesn't look good, it doesn't help anybody if you have to start laying people off. I would say that our district does a good job of managing its resources, and so hopefully we won't have to do any of those kind of things. But we are, and I think it's a good thing, forcing all our departments and all our department heads and principals to look at their budgets and say, "Hey, are there places we can save money?" And our commitment as a board and a district is to, we won't take people out of the classroom. We'll take it out of some other place if we have to end up doing that. But at this point in time, there, I don't know of anything where we're saying, "Hey, we're going to pull people out." Certainly Tacoma got themselves a little bit of a jam, you know? I mean, they hired a lot of administrators at the high end of the salary scale, and it bit them.
So, I had a similar question. So, you're hopeful that the enrichment levy will be able to be used purely for enrichment programs, as opposed to maintaining the salary levels for existing staff and programs?
That's, yes. That's probably the, as an attorney would tell me, yes is the answer.
Okay. I won't put you out of the spot anymore on that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Wagaman.
Thank you. Have a good day.
We now move to public comments. This is when any member of the public may speak of any, on any issue of relevance to the council or city. Please leave me your comments for three minutes. The yellow light comes on, it's a thirty-second warning. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as John Simpson, Lakewood, Washington. First person who signed up is Brady Lowine.
Yes, my name's Brady Lewine. I'm at Spring Brook Park, one-two-six-one-six, Forty-seventh Avenue, Southwest. You'll have to pardon my voice here. Been under a lot of stress lately. I did, I did submit some information for, if anybody wants to take a look at it, I left my phone number on there, too. My chief concern here is about, both houses on both sides of me have been purchased by the City of Lakewood, and Mary Dobbsworth apprised me just last week that it's the council, that it's the individuals that have the power to do eminent domain in order to take my property. And so, essentially, that's why I'm here today. I'm just trying to get a start. So, you can see my face. Again, if somebody's interested in giving me a call, I'd be more than happy to. I understand that I got code enforcement there now. I haven't done a darn thing for the last two years, because Mary said they were just simply going to knock the house down. So, the house looks pretty bad right now, but if I can stay there, I can guarantee you. I've already told the code enforcement officer, Bill Mathews, Mary, and whoever else was interested, that had I been left alone for the last two years, and I could have made the necessary, my garage would be finished, I told them, my house would probably be the cutest house in all of Spring Brook. But again, I haven't done a darn thing in two years, because I've been under this situation. And so, essentially, I'm just here trying to find out if the City of Lakewood does plan on taking my property, and if so, can I find out, find out when and how long do I have to stay there? Or the other, the good news would be if I can stay there and get the place cleaned up and move on. I believe I'm being, the property is now being rezoned. I'm not, Mary says that I was supposed to have gotten something in the mail about that. I have not received a thing, so I don't know where that's at, whether I'm grandfather-clawed in, or my, I just absolutely don't know nothing. I haven't received anything. So, I have no idea what's going on with my property, and haven't for two years now. Is there any questions?
This isn't a question-answer session. This is your opportunity to talk to us.
Yes, thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak. If anyone else wishes to speak, please approach the podium. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. B, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. C, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents for the period of March sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, through April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. E, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of one million, four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents for the period of March twentieth, two thousand nineteen, through April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. F, motion number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Miles Resources LLC in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-eight cents for the construction of the Fort Silicon Park Utility Project. G, motion number two thousand nineteen dash twenty-seven, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Puget Paving and Construction in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the construction of the two thousand nineteen roadway patching program. H, ordinance number seven zero seven, amending the two thousand nineteen to twenty-twenty biennial budget. I, ordinance number seven zero eight, approving projects to be funded with revenue generated by the City of Lakewood's Transportation Benefit District. J, ordinance number seven zero nine, approving the vacation of Seattle Ave-Southwest right-of-way between Pacific Highway Southwest and Interstate Five. K, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of March twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, and two, Planning Commission meeting minutes of April third, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We now move to ordinance number seven oh eight. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven zero eight, adopting amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code, chapters eighteen A fifty-six hundred through eighteen A fifty-six eighty, related to signs.
For this, we have Mr. Viewer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item was scheduled for action this evening for May sixth. However, with, speaking with the city attorney's office, we need more time to review this, and so we are recommending that this be continued to June fourth.
Let's see. Mr. Mayor, I'll move... You speaking to seven oh eight or seven oh six? Seven oh six.
Seven oh six, according to the agenda bill, or the agenda.
I called seven oh eight. Okay. We'll back up then. Madam Clerk, would you address ordinance number seven oh six? It's clear we're on the same wavelength.
Okay, ordinance number seven zero six, adopting amendments to the Lakewood Municipal Code, chapters eighteen A fifty-six hundred through eighteen A fifty-six eighty, related to signs.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, for a second time, this is a proposal to amend the sign code. It was supposed to return to you on this evening for action. We're requesting additional month for more time to review this.
So, we're looking for a motion to...
Continue.
Continue to a time certain, to June third?
What day?
I believe it's June fourth.
June third?
Excuse me, June third. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, I move continuation of ordinance number seven oh six to June third.
Now, I second that.
We have a motion to continue the consideration of ordinance number seven oh six to June third, two thousand nineteen, by Mr. Bulkey, seconded by Mr. Simpson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We now move to ordinance number seven oh eight.
Seven ten.
So, what? We're going to seven ten. Oh, excuse me. Yeah, I see. I flipped wrong. So, row six, go to seven ten.
Ordinance number seven ten, authorizing the acquisition of real property located at one-one-two-zero-one through one-one-two-zero-three, Military Road Southwest, by condemnation for park purposes.
Ms. Walker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is before you, and it may ring some bells in your memory. And what happened was, when I talked to Mr. Williams, I even had to remind him, you originally were willing to go to condemnation, but this council typically doesn't go, have to go that far when we're dealing with different properties. And in this particular instance, we were dealing with a situation where Mr. Williams had been trying to contact the bank involved and getting absolutely no response. So, we started with possession and use on the theory that the possession and use would actually get them to call us back. Well, it has not had that effect, and so we are now at the point where we need the actual legislative action, even though the council had already indicated that they were willing to go there. Mr. Williams is very particular about dotting the i's and crossing the t's, and he wanted to make sure that we belt and suspenders it if we have to go that full distance. He can't explain to you why we're having to go to this length, even after we've gotten possession and use. If you've looked at the area, they've already put in, the Parks Department has done an excellent job sprucing up that entry, and they recently just got water out there, so that when it hits eighty degrees at the end of the week, the plants are not going to die. But if we want to perfect this acquisition, we need to actually go the full yard with the condemnation.
So, is it, is my understanding correct that the debt in the first lien exceeds the value of the property and... the value of the property and the fee owners are amenable to this action?
That is correct. And we have had good response from the people who are on the property. They've been very good to work with and very willing to have this go the way it's going. But what you said may be the reason the bank's not as responsive. I don't, I don't know why they're not responding.
Mr. Whelan.
Just a quick question. So I took a tour out to various parcels over the Friday morning session, and this was one of them. So we already have the signage, the welcome to Lakewood sign in there.
Yes, we do. And that was, that was the reason I said that this may ring some bells for you. Mr. Williams went in and got that possession and use right out of the gate and, and proceeded to, that allowed us to do the work. And that's why he thought at that point, the bank would actually start calling back and want to head off the legal action because what a waste of time and effort, right?
Right.
But this is where we find ourselves, and that's the reason we want to go to the next step.
And the corpus of the property is, just as I look at 129 in our packet, just that little corner, it doesn't go beyond the fence to that house. It was just a little corner piece. That was it.
Pretty much, yes. And that's the reason it looked so appealing for a gateway spot. We knew that there had been the abatement action there, and it seemed like just the right, spot at the right time. And the only catch point was this bank not being responsive.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, I'm a little bit less conversant in this topic than the deputy mayor. So there's a lender owed, has a lien on this property. He's owed some money.
Correct.
And he's owed more money than we're going to pay the property owner.
Correct. Which may be why they're not calling back.
So, so that, what becomes the status of the difference? I mean, does somebody owe it? Does somebody lose it? Is there anything that relates to an obligation in terms of the city with respect to that difference? And I'm not sure how, how much, what I have here doesn't tell me what the difference is of whether it's $100,000 or $10,000.
Well, Councilmember Branstadter, the city as an entity cannot pay more than fair market value, regardless of what's loaned on the property. In a condemnation action, we pay the fair market value. Otherwise, it's a gift of public funds. And we aren't obligated to pay something that's owed someone. We're obligated to pay what the value of the property is. So I, I have no idea what happens to the rest of that money. I don't know if the owner ends up paying it, but it's not going to be the city.
So, so how does the city, but does the city get clear title?
Yes. Under condemnation. That's the reason for a condemnation action. And it's one of the reasons that condemnation can be controversial, Councilmember, because we can only pay what the fair market value is regardless of what the owner thinks it's worth. And it's one of the reasons that the council is understandably reluctant to just condemn every time they need a piece of property. Typically, this is a last effort to acquire property that's viewed as necessary for the public good.
So the parkers, who are the current owners?
Yes.
That, are they going to, under, if we pursue this action, continue to be liable for the difference in the debt? And is, does the $55,000 that we're going to pay actually go to the lender? Or does it go to them?
Councilmember Branstadter, the money goes to the owner of the property. And after that, we get title and the title is clear. That's as much as I know about how that process is going to work. Otherwise, I'm going into somebody's particular financial arrangements. And I, I have not done that, nor has Mr. Williams done that.
So is, Ms. Walker, is, do the owners of this parcel own the adjoining property also?
Yes.
So I can speculate, but with some accuracy, having been through this many times representing lenders, in all likelihood, there is one need of trust covering more than one parcel. Covers this, the building next door. And so say you have a proper, a $250,000 loan, and they've paid it down to 200,000, they're only going to get 55 for this. They would have to give a partial release for it. And it may be that when the abatement took place and the, and the like, there was actually too much money went on the property. So there's a deficiency. There may, may not be a deficiency, but to get the part of it released, you have to have cooperation with the bank. Bank doesn't cooperate, they end up getting that money and applying it to the debt. The owner, in most cases, still owes the rest of the money that they borrowed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
I think the, the key here is the borrower is okay with the sale.
Yeah.
So I, and I'm presuming that they will still owe, that they're probably, either they, it's got more collateral, or they're presumably guaranteeing the loan. They're, I mean, they're personally liable for the debt. So they're, so if they just take that money and Councilmember Barth is in the escrow business, I'm sure the bank will be there with their hot little hand to, to get that money. And really, to them, that's probably several years of payments. So I, I think presumably they, they'll come around to on this. They just don't want to encourage this kind of thing. But I'm, they'll, they'll be more than happy to take the check.
And in the case of many, if not most, out-of-area banks, this is probably a matter of indifference. They aren't going to concede that, concede anything, but they'll take the money if it shows up. And in many cases, there's no incentive for the people working this to, it's based on write downs and audits, but there's not a lot of incentive for the people working these matters to process this. Their pay is incentivized on other things. Long since been charged off. Yeah. Charged off property. So is there a motion on ordinance number 710?
So moved, Ms. Mayor.
Moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Bulkey. We adopt ordinance number 710. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now move to ordinance number 711.
Ordinance number 711, adopting the periodic review amendments to the 2014 Shoreline Master Program and adopting the 2019 Shoreline Restoration Plan and directing the Planning Commission to hold an annual restoration plan activities review.
For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just going to have a very short PowerPoint for the public's benefit this evening. If you recall, about a month ago now, you had a discussion about the Shoreline Master Program and Shoreline Restoration Plan. And then in addition to that, there was a recommendation that came from the Planning Commission to establish an annual meeting where members of the community or organizations that were involved with restoration activities would, would provide an update to the Planning Commission on those activities. And the Commission would then bring to you any relevant amendments to the restoration plan going forward. This evening, you have already received your public hearing comments, and we're at the point of you deciding whether you're ready to take action. Just a quick reminder, the periodic review, which is what this is, rather than a full-blown substantive comprehensive review of the Shoreline Master Program, looks at changes in requirements of the act and guidelines, changes for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations. And then there were some additionally internally identified staff issues. And then there was a decision on a voluntary basis for the city to also undertake the adoption of a restoration plan. This map shows the jurisdiction covered by the Shoreline Master Program. And given the parameters of what the SMP governs, which is 20 acres or more in size for lakes and 20 cubic feet per second of size of creek, these are the water bodies involved. So you have American Lake, Gravely Lake, Lake Stilicum, Wahop Lake, Lake Louise, Chambers Creek, Clover Creek and its associated wetlands, and then Stilicum Creek. Where, there are a couple of changes, since you saw this in April. I provided for you the pages per the packet itself for this evening. There is a correction, as was directed by the deputy mayor at the last discussion, where American Lake is the, truly the correct water body this time, that's been designated a shoreline of statewide significance. And so that's touched on a couple of times within the SMP. And then there's an updated figure one, which is that map there on the left-hand side. And then in the restoration plan, there was a discussion also of this same figure, which has been updated in that document as well. And then Councilmember Branstadter requested an update of the references that were included in the restoration plan. That has been done, and that's located at page 353 of your packet. And then there was a conversation also by the council about whether Appendix A to the restoration plan was still relevant. If you remember, it was a 1999 resolution. And so what's been provided to you this evening is a proposal to just eliminate that appendix as well. There were a couple of questions brought to staff's attention today regarding what's proposed in the, either the SMP or the restoration plan. First of all, this is a map that is one of the few that we have that actually shows all of the lakes covered by the Shoreline Master Program within one map. So apologies for it all being read, but the point here was to be able to let you see all of the water bodies. And you'll notice that they are surrounded by a yellow outline. That is the jurisdiction of the Shoreline Master Program. So 200 feet upland of the ordinary high water mark. But the point of showing this is this map is showing you impervious surface. And as you'll see, pretty much the city is impervious surface because it's built out. This isn't a surprise. The Shoreline Master Program on, the interim SMP was adopted in 1996. And this was pretty much the state of the city at that time, let alone in 2014 when a, an updated SMP was adopted. And then if you were to look within the SMP now, at page 208 of your packet, you would see that there are setbacks required for development. And if you were to start over, if you were to try to comply for all of the properties within the SMP's jurisdiction, it's at least a 65-foot setback from the water. And so most, if not all, of the development around the, the lakes within the city would be considered non-conforming in order to continue in a, in a legal way. And so there was a converse, a discussion had, I understand, with the city manager about non-conforming uses. And this is discussed at page 273 of the packet for this evening. A question about whether the non-conforming use language was new or different or, or easy to use. And the answer to all of that is it is new language. It's not new concept within the SMP, but it is updated language, which is, A, recommended by the Department of Ecology as part of the periodic review, but B, it's going to be more user-friendly for those who own property within single-family zones in particular. And there was also a question about the term bulk, B-U-L-K. That is a definition used in the SMP directly out of the WAC, the Administrative Code for the State, and also updated per Department of Ecology's direction. The term itself is not defined within either the WACs or the RCWs. And so just looking at Merriam-Webster, what does bulk mean? It's an organized structure, especially when viewed primarily as a mass of material. So think of it as a house. Think of it as a garage. Think of it as the overall presence of such a structure on one of these parcels that's governed by the SMP. So where we sit in terms of the legislative process, we're almost to the end. The decision was made to go ahead and have the review and amendments per Ecology and Planning Commission action. This evening, if the council's ready, you would be taking action on the amendments to the SMP, the adoption of the restoration plan, and the establishment of that annual process with the Planning Commission. Assuming that goes forward this evening, by the end of this week, the new documents will be sent off to Department of Ecology for their review. And they will provide their final approval by June 30th. And the draft ordinance which you have in your packet, starting at page 145, recognizes that the effective date of the new SMP and restoration plan would be 14 days after Ecology takes its action. With that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Spear. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. And thank you for researching those 11th-hour questions that I, that I had. But I would like to just address the bulk question a bit because in the, in the, in the management program, it says that there are standards for bulk. I'm, I'm like, I'm looking at, like, on page 273, where it says conformance, I mean, the subparagrafts 2C, where it says, conformance with ethical bulk and dimensional standards. And I guess I'm trying to understand what kind of a standard would you have for bulk, given the Merriam-Webster definition? And I assume they're not in this document, because I couldn't find them, that they're in the, the referenced WAC that you provided us. But what sort of a standard is, is, is defined there?
That's going to be talking about the placement of the vertical structures on the parcel. It's going to be talking about the dimensions of the parcel, height, weight, volume. It's going to be talking about how far away it may need to be from a wetland or, or a water body that's, that's being governed by the SMP. So it, it's really a, a very general term relating to an item that might be governed by your development regulations, be they the SMP ones or outside of the SMP area, the rest of your development code. So it's, what the building needs to be shaped like, what the building needs to be distanced from and by how far, those types of things.
I guess that I'm, if one of the goals is to make it more understandable to property owners what the regulations are, I'm not quite sure that I see how that, with, with that one respect, it does that. But bulk is not a term of our invention. It's, it's something that we're just quoting Ecology's recommendation.
Correct. Per direction from Ecology, we've picked up the updated version of this whole section that comes from the WACs, and it includes that term.
Okay. So when I looked on page 273 of our packet, that there is a section there under section F2, standards for non-conforming structure, uses and lots.
Correct.
And it seems to be a complete rewrite. I mean, it's, it's, it's an entirely new section. And that, that there was a previous section with the same title that is now sort of redlined out beginning on page 274.
Yes.
So, but it wasn't completely lined out because it was assigned a new paragraph number, a paragraph number three. It was changed from two to three, which, but there seems to be no text. So is the fact that there's a three there, just a Scrivener's error, and there shouldn't be a three?
You can blame it on Microsoft Word.
To go and do that.
Yes. That's simply from incorporating the new language. I think it automatically dropped a new, a line in the paragraph, outline.
And then I would just note, and it's perhaps a Scrivener's issue, but this particular new paragraph, F2, everywhere else in the document, you would go, F2 in the subparagrafts would start with a A. Everywhere else in the document, that's a consistent wording. And this has gone F2 and then parathetic 1. You know, it's, it's formatted totally different than everywhere else in the document, just with the, with the lettering of the paragraphs. And that, that maybe in the final version could be corrected. I don't have any problem with the text or the order of it, but it's just not the way the rest of the document is formatted.
It can certainly be.
And I think that's a Scrivener's issue as well, Mr. Mayor.
When the state level, that's handled by the code reviser. They're going to straighten them out. Any other questions?
I got it.
Mr. Bulkey.
So I, we're still on page 274 because apparently that's the relevant section here of changing or doing what we're doing. So about a year ago, we had a picture where someone was building almost in the lake. For all intents and purposes, they were almost in the lake. And I think we allowed it, we permitted it. It was about 10 feet away from the lake, between 10 and 15 feet of the lake, which is in clear violation of any shoreline management updates. is in clear violation of any shoreline management updates since 1972. But we allowed it because there's an exception. And for a guy, and so I'm thinking it's in that nonconforming lot, that that becomes the vehicle whereby everybody kind of drives the bus through to build within 15 feet of the lake.
If you're starting from scratch, meaning there's not an existing structure that you're extending or relocating or something like that, yeah, you would be looking at a lot and whether or not that could still be used in some reasonable way, or would it be a taking if otherwise not?
Is that, is that, I guess I'm looking at both of you now. So is that the vehicle that people use? They say, "Well, it's a nonconforming lot, therefore, because I'm not 30 feet away from the road, and if I have to be 30 feet away from the road, I can't be 65 feet from the lake, so I'm not going to build on that side, so I build 10 feet from the lake." It just seems to me, let me do my editorial comment before you answer. It just seems to me that for whatever reason, we always have an exception when someone wants to build closer to the lake, that there is probably no other entity more forgiving than the city of Lakewood coming up with, everything seems to have a pre-72 exception. I mean, people seem, who weren't even alive in 1972 when the initiative passed, seems to have an exception of some sort. So explain to me why we are so liberal about the use of breaking the 65-foot law.
Well, let me just start by saying that I would say that 99% of all the lots around the lake, to some degree, are either legal nonconforming lots or legal nonconforming structures. And so, we have a significant issue just with that particular element. In some cases, we also have issues with elevations. And the elevations also inherently bring in another level of this whole process into review and reconsideration of building additions, alterations. Then on top of that, in the property that you just mentioned, we have some postage-stamped lots in the city of Lakewood that are so small that if you tried to apply all the various setbacks and requirements, there wouldn't be any land to develop upon. And in that particular case, there were also some other surrounding issues pertaining to rights of way and access from that property to adjoining pieces of property to the south. So that was a very, very unusual and constrained situation that took a long time to solve. Where we have had full compliance is when some people have come in, and this is on the north side of American Lake, where people have looked at older homes and said, "We're getting rid of these." They're demolishing and then replacing them with larger homes. In that particular case, they're coming in with a 65-foot setback. We also have issues with the bulk retaining walls because Ecology wants those to go away and replaced with something else. So that's another issue that we have. The current code also allows people, because this was what I thought was the direction of the council previously, if you come into some level of compliance with the standards for shoreline lots, we will provide some level of flexibility on development standards. And in my experience dealing with variances on single-family lots, it's my experience that, generally speaking, city councils want some level of flexibility to property owners in those kinds of situations.
So when you talk about elevation, if it's a steep slope, I can build closer?
Good point. Here's another one. 7100 Block of Crescent Lane. We have a situation where we had a log house that was constructed, and then the person prior to incorporation built a house around the log house, and then wanted to come in and had come in to do a complete redevelopment of the site because we declared the property a nuisance. So he then came in and tried to develop the property, and immediately we had some issues with that particular lot because of the elevations on the site. And there, we allowed the house, that one lot is steeper than all of the other lots in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And so, in that particular case, we did allow for some flexibility in the shoreline setback, but we did require better standards with respect to the side yard setbacks. We still have an outstanding issue with a garage that we're still dealing with.
Could I, could somebody who owned a lot actually end up by sale of property or division of the property, actually creating a nonconforming lot and then get themselves closer to the lake?
That would require, people attempt to do that through a bounding line adjustment. Those we would deny. You cannot create an illegal lot under the short plotting procedures.
Okay, okay.
I guess what I'm trying to say, it depends because each lot is so unique. And most of these lots were all created well before cityhood in the 1900s.
The law has been around since 1972. I mean, that is now going on, what, 50 years? So I guess I'm, at some point, the landowners know what the law is, or people who buy lots know what the law is. I'm presuming that the person who bought the lot on Lake Stilicum, who built within about 15 feet of the lake, knew when they purchased the property that there was a Shoreline Management Act in place that would only allow them to build within 65 feet of the, so I guess buyers after 1972, I don't quite understand.
All I would say in that particular case was the size of the lot was so small that if you applied all of the setbacks provided for the necessary parking, you were not left with much of a lot to develop.
Okay.
So in that case, what was pre-existing on the lot?
You're asking me to go back in history here, and I'm trying, but there was an existing single-family residence at that location.
Which was, which was, do we know what the setback was on that?
I can provide you the information, but I'm not comfortable giving you the information this evening because I'm not, I don't remember.
Because I have, you know, I have the same concern, have dealt with a lot of real estate. For example, the property that we subjected to inverse, or to confirmation this evening was, previously something was there. It was non-buildable. So if somebody buys that knowing what its circumstance is today, and then comes in and says, "Well, I want a variance of all the setbacks and size restrictions and driveway requirements, because otherwise I bought a non-buildable piece of property." Where there is such a thing as a non-buildable piece of property, that's why they end up in tax sales and aren't utilized. So I'm a bit concerned about the ability to go so far in, and it's not just a concern for that one lot, it's a concern for the neighbors too, because I can envision a case where the neighbors have peacefully enjoyed their property for years, and somebody comes in and says, "Well, my property's special," so they want to go higher and closer, and they impede everybody's existing view in a non, what's at least nominally a nonconforming manner. So how do we protect against that?
Well, I would go back to what the proposed ordinance or the proposed code is saying. Under page 273, I'll go to 21B. "Nonconforming structures may be enlarged or expanded, provided said enlargement meets the applicable provisions of the master program. In the absence of other specific regulations, proposed expansion shall not increase the extent of nonconformity by further encroaching upon or extending into areas where construction would not be allowed for new structures unless a shoreline variance permit is obtained." So this language is basically saying that you have to take a trip to the hearing examiner if you want to do something outside the norms in the shoreline area, which requires a public And going on, "Nonconforming single-family residences that are located landward of the ordinary high-water mark may be enlarged or expanded in conformance with applicable bulk and dimensional standards by the addition of space to the main structure or by the addition of normal appurtenances as decided in the state WAC upon approval of a conditional use permit." So again, you're back to the hearing examiner, in which case, both in either a variance or a conditional use permit, you have to make findings. D, "A structure for which a variance has been issued shall be considered a legal nonconforming structure, and the requirements of this section shall apply as they apply to pre-existing I would also go to, under E2 or I, "The proposed use will be at least as consistent with the policies and provisions of the act and the master program and as compatible with the uses in the area as the pre-existing use. In addition, such conditions may be attached to the permit as are deemed necessary to ensure compliance with the findings, the requirements of the master program, and to assure that the use will not become a nuisance or a hazard." And then, if you move a nonconforming structure, it must be brought into as closely as a practical conformance as the applicable program states. And then, if it's damaged, a nonconforming development, which would be the structure, to the extent not exceeding 75% of the replacement cost of the original development, it may be reconstructed to those configurations existing immediately prior to the time of development was damaged, provided that the application is made for the permits necessary to restore the development within two years. And then, we move on to nonconforming uses. It talks about legally established uses. "In the absence of other specific regulations in the master program, such issues shall not be enlarged or expanded, except upon approval of a conditional use permit." So in reading all this, what I'm attempting to try to explain to the city council is, there are certain controls that are being placed into effect with nonconforming uses through variances or conditional use permits, public hearings, and the hearing examiner making the necessary findings.
Mr. Branshitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the regulations, as they are written, provide numerous avenues to do something that doesn't strictly conform, whether it's based on something that was there at some time in the past, the size of a lot, a variety of things, and then you'll do that. And the commonality of the language has to do with, you need to get a variance and a conditional use permit, and you can, and if you can sell that, you can do almost anything. From my time before being on the council, when I was sitting out there and when the first shoreline management program was being discussed by the then-council, your comment about that council wanting wording that provided a great deal of flexibility for property owners to do things around lakes is accurate, because that was what, essentially, what was part of the conversation. I would tell you, since I've been on the council, the public input that I have received has not been from a property owner wanting to do something. It's from neighbors and other residents on bodies of water that would like to see these 1972 standards applied to as people are making changes and are using, or are essentially building new things. Because if people do things according to the standards, then they see that as essentially sustaining their quality of life and of their property. And so, I don't think that your perception that the council wants the city to be exceptionally flexible in terms of conditional use permits and variances is reflective of my view as one council member based upon what I think is the current public sentiment of people who own property on the lakes, which does not include me.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Weir.
Let me state that getting a variance, a shoreline variance and a conditional use permit through the shoreline process is not easy. Many of these are very, very controversial. They take a long time to process, and in some cases in the past, has led to some people taking legal action. These are not something that you just drop off by the city and are easily approved. So I wish to make that point to the council. The other point that I would stress, if you make this more stringent, you may make it so difficult that the impact is that property owners are not able to make minor additions, expansions, or alterations to their property as well. So then, that puts you into a position of seeing less improvement to existing houses around the lakes. So this is a balancing act. I appreciate the fact that we're having this discussion. It's not easy for staff, and I can understand why the council's having some discussion on this.
Mr. Whalen.
Well, I'll throw my two cents, and there is one who actually built a house on waterfront property in the last 18 years. I think it's important to have the flexibility that we have here. I believe that 95% to 98% of all the properties around the shorelines have already been improved. So we're at the point where there are very few infill lots that will apply, that are open for development. So you really are looking at the conditional use issue. And we made the compromise of having the 65-foot setback, because I recall when we went through this the first time a few years back, and that was a pretty big compromise. And I think the recommendation from the Planning Commission and the restoration program components of this plan, as recommended by the Planning Commission and as supported by some of the public comment, I think gives good incentives for folks to, over time, do the right thing with regard to lessening the hardening of their bulkheads and allowing more natural growth to take over when those kinds of things, you know, docks fail or trees fall down in the water, that kind of thing. But with regard to the construction of homes, I think we've got the right flexibility, and yet, we've got the program in place. So you've got to comply with the program. Getting a shoreline variance is not an easy thing for anyone to do. So I'd recommend we adopt it.
May I entertain a motion? Second. It's been moved by Ms. Bar, seconded by Mr. Simpson, the proposed ordinance number 711. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, we move to resolutions. Resolution number 201909, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2019-09, submitting the question of creating the American Lake Lake Management District Number One to the owners of the land within the proposed district.
Miss, we have Mr. Vigorin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we held a public hearing two weeks ago before the council on the formation of the Lake Management District for American Lake. Heard from a number of different citizens around the lake, generally in support of the formation of the district. There were a few questions that came up during that public hearing as well, and we've presented to you a number of times in the past. We also sent out, with the help of the group of folks that were interested in forming the Lake Management District, a frequently asked question sheet to address a number of those questions that came up. Also had a chance to talk to a couple of the folks afterwards that had some concerns. Per the RCW, the next step in the formation of a Lake Management District requires the city council to authorize- city council to authorize a vote of the property owners within the proposed Lake Management District boundaries. Tonight, council is being asked to authorize a submittal of a question to form the Lake Management District property owners within the boundary. With city council approval ballots be mailed out tomorrow, May seventh, with a return no later than five p.m. on May twenty-eighth. After tallying the ballots, we'll return to the city council on June third with the results, and also bring forward a recommendation on the next steps. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Vigran. Before you get away, though, I would like to note that both collectively and individually, we've received a number of compliments on the way you personally have handled this matter with the lakefront owners. And it was very much appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion?
So moved, I vote. Move it forward for self-determination of property owners.
Moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Moss, that we adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen oh nine. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now move to resolution number two thousand nineteen ten. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number two thousand nineteen dash ten, adopting the fiscal year two thousand nineteen Joint Tacoma and Lakewood Consolidated Annual Action Plan, including amendments to the fiscal year two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen consolidated annual action plans.
For this, we have the master of federal red tape compliance, Mr. Gumm.
Thanks for the introduction, Mr. Mayor. I've never had that one before. Good evening, members of the council. Each year, as you all are well aware, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development does require jurisdictions that receive Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Act funds to submit a consolidated annual action plan. That annual action plan identifies housing and community development needs, strategies for meeting those needs, and how those funds are to be spent each and every year. So in accordance with the CDBG Citizens' Plan adopted by the City of Lakewood, the process was conducted, a public hearing was held on October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. The board heard from sixteen individuals at that public hearing. The board then formulated its goals and policies for the proposed use of funds. That was then presented to the council and subsequently adopted on November fifth, two thousand and eighteen. The priorities in order of priority were physical infrastructure improvements, housing, public services, and economic development. With these funding priorities in mind, the advisory board then made recommendations for the two thousand nineteen annual action plan. That was presented to council at your March eleventh, two thousand nineteen session. From that point, a thirty-day citizen review period was conducted, April first to April thirtieth. A formal hearing was held on April fifteenth before council. The proposal moving forward is a joint plan. It needs to be submitted by the City of Lakewood and the City of Tacoma to HUD no later than May fifteenth. So for two thousand and nineteen, the funding allocations include the reprogramming of forty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents in funding for fiscal years two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. Those are the amendments in those years. Those reprogram funds will be used to supplement the two thousand and nineteen plan, bringing the total available to six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and nine cents. So the proposed allocations are listed in your agenda packet on pages three eighty-two and three eighty-three, tables one and two. Funding by order of priority are as follows. For CDBG, priority one, physical infrastructure, recommendation of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventeen cents for low-income street lighting, fifty-one thousand dollars for debt service for Hundred and Eighth Street Southwest. Priority two, housing, would be a recommendation of two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and eighteen cents for major home repair sewer loan program, thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents for home housing services administration. No funding for public services, no funding for economic development recommended. For the home funds, the recommendations are, City of Lakewood receives ten percent administration for the city, thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Affordable housing fund, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And housing rehab would be a forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. The one thing that I would like to say is we still haven't received our home final allocations yet. They're still projected. It's taking HUD a little bit longer to do that. We have our CDBG allocation amount, but we don't know the home. So presuming that we get that fairly soon, those funds would be just prorated based on the recommendations, once we do have that. So tonight before you is the final step in approving the two thousand nineteen Joint Consolidated Annual Action Plan, including amendments to the two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen plans. As I mentioned before, that has to be presented to HUD no later than May fifteenth. Following HUD's review and approval, a contract will be issued to the City of Lakewood. That will be signed by the city manager and administered by staff. So with that.
Mr. Bulkey.
Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions, or at least one. The Workforce Central Apprenticeship Program, this is something they came in and talked to us about last year. They came in at a study session and asked for this. So this is the apprenticeship partnership program that they're starting this year?
Mm-hmm.
And what kind of agreements do we have in place as to, are they, have they guaranteed us a certain number of spots from people from Lakewood, or how does that work?
Yeah, their allocation was forty-five thousand dollars is what we're looking for, and they were going to guarantee us sixteen spots, potentially up to nineteen.
And that's in this specific program, which I, that they're just putting together?
Yeah, it's a, pre-job, it's a construction, a pre-apprenticeship program that they're going to train.
Okay. And then how many more payments do we have on Hundred and Eighth Street? Is this the last one?
This is the last and final one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What are the parameters controlling the use of affordable housing funds?
Affordable housing is, are we, for the home funds?
Under home, yes.
Okay. The home affordable housing funds are typically to benefit low- and moderate-income individuals. So you can do single-family construction as long as the final owner is low-income. You can do things like multifamily housing development. You can do rental assistance. You can do all kinds of things. Ultimately, the benefit is low-income housing for an individual or family household.
So that can be part of, part of the multi-layered financing for a habitat house, for example?
Yeah, typically, that's what we have seen for the city is subsidy development, where the funds are used to acquire the land and provide some funding for the development. That's the typical project. It could be for other things, but that's what we have used it for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Entertained a motion? Second. It's been moved by Ms. Moss, seconded by Mr. Branshitter, that we adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash ten. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gumm. Any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business?
No, Mayor.
And we move to reports by the city manager, Ms. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to start off, call up Mary McDougall, our Human Resources Director, to give you an update on where we are with the Salary Commission. As you know, this is something that's required by city code to undertake every four years. And then following Ms. McDougall, I'd like to call up Mr. Bucic, Paul Bucic, our Public Works Engineering Director, to give you an update and a review of a contract, actually an amendment to a contract for transportation services with Pierce County, who would like council to take action at your next regular meeting on that particular item. But that, I'll turn it over to Ms. McDougall.
Good evening, Mary Anderson and city council members. I'm here to provide an update about the Independent Salary Commission. As you know, it was established in two thousand fifteen to determine salaries paid to the mayor and city council. And the initial salary review was conducted in two thousand fifteen and is to be conducted every fourth year subsequent. So this is the year. The duties of the commissioner are to determine the salaries paid to the mayor and council within forty-five days of confirmation by the city council, to hold open public meetings, to provide an opportunity for citizen comment prior to making a determination about the salaries, and to file a statement of salaries with the city clerk, with increases to be effective on the next payday for city employees, and decreases effective at the commencement of the next subsequent term of office. So members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council and do not receive any compensation. And members may not be an officer, official, or employee of the city, or an immediate family member of an officer, official, or employee of the city. The Salary Commission consists of five voting members appointed to a term of one salary review, and the term commences upon council confirmation and terminates upon filing of the statement of salaries with the city clerk. For two thousand nineteen review, the schedule is, from April fifteenth to June third, the notice of vacancies is advertised. July first, Independent Salary Commission members are confirmed by city council. July first through August fourteenth is the forty-five-day review and determination time period, and July ninth or tenth is a tentative first meeting of the Salary Commission, with additional dates to be determined. The notice of vacancies was sent to the independent, to past Independent Salary Commission members, neighborhood associations, the sub-times, and the city clerk's general distribution list, and is included in the city manager's weekly briefing. As of today, we do not, we do not, we have not received any applications. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? What happens if we don't get applications? How do we comply with our own rules?
Well, we could extend the period. We've set up the time period, but there, but we could extend the time period and have the confirmation occur later.
Thank you. Ms. Coffield.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call up Mr. Bucic.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief update on some work that we've been doing with Pierce County. We are looking to replace our existing agreement with Pierce County for transportation services and provide a new contract for services. We have enjoyed the use of Pierce County services since the city was created in nineteen ninety-six. With me tonight, I have agreements to go back just on transportation services to two thousand and eight. I know they go beyond that. I didn't want to dig into the records to provide all that information, too. There are two drivers for providing a new contract service for Pierce County, one driven by us, one driven by Pierce County. Driven by us is because we have about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of pavement markings that we would like to use their capabilities for this year. We were very successful in using them last year, and we'd like to do so again. But what we've looked at and discovered is that the contract we have with them, the inter-local agreement, now is a contract for service, actually caps us at eighty-five thousand dollars. Previously, previous contracts were for upwards of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So there's no real reason why we can't have a larger contract for us to use on an as-needed basis. So I have set the limit on the new contract for services at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason for that is, that's the level that their directors are authorized to sign on agreements without going to their council. Plus, in addition to the hundred and seventy-five thousand, there's also other technical services that we can draw upon, and other less-than-technical services, such as snow plowing services, sanding services, pavement patching services, and a few other things. We are also looking at doing a pilot project with them on factor services to find out if they are, and as they believe, more cost-effective than our current contract for services. So we've already identified a couple of different sections of the city, and then working with that part of their organization to figure out how long they would take to do that. And we've communicated that with our contractor already, who says, yeah, go ahead, I still think that I can beat their prices. So this will be a good comparison for us, to see how it goes. The other reason for updating this is Pierce County has gone through a review of their billing practices and all their inter-local agreements and contracts, and they discovered that, in their minds and their opinions and their numbers show it, that they've actually been subsidizing all the different jurisdictions. So they have changed the way they are doing their billing practices. The good news is, we know exactly what we're paying for. The other good news is they're no longer adding a markup on all the material supplies and everything else. We're the first ones out of the gate using the new language, but this is language that's going to be rolling out to all of their municipalities they provide services for. So we're not the guinea pigs, but we are the first out of the gate. So with those two things, that's why we're not going to be doing an amendment to it. We're going to be replacing with a whole new contract for service. In your packet tonight is the contract for service. I'd be happy to go through any of it with you if you desire to dive into the details. If not, then I would just open to any questions you may have on it.
Questions? Mr. Branshitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Bucic, I understand we're going to do a new contract with a cap that provides the flexibility to access services from Pierce County up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually?
Annually.
So with respect to our current budget, that the things that we would use this contract for are things that we already have in the budget, we would have paid for them in some way? Or are we going to require an additional budget authorization for O and M?
The former. We would only use this contract based on our current budget authority, and we view this as a more cost-efficient way of getting the work done, especially since Pierce County has all the equipment for doing the pavement markings. In fact, they recently invested in a three-quarter of a million-dollar pavement striping machine. And so that will make their work even more efficient. They'll be able to get more done on a per-hour basis because of the way it's set up. So we're strictly using our available budget and available, or directed work. There's nothing new we're going to be using this for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions for Mr. Bucic? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a few more updates, if I might, Mayor. So this weekend, we had our community cleanup, our spring community cleanup was a great success. We had four hundred and fifty vehicles come through over a two-day period, and that averaged about forty-five vehicles per hour. There were forty-seven repeats. One of the things that we did notice was a number of folks came through with rented U-Haul trucks and trailers and vans. And some of those were repeats as well, which meant that folks were cleaning things out. Matter of fact, somebody came through, and I think it was Mr. Buwer, mentioned to them that, yeah, we take tires so long as the rims are off. And he went back and he showed up with fifty tires or so. And so was able to get those off of his property, which had probably been sitting there for a good number of years. Really want to thank, you know, Shannon Kelly Fong, as well as our team here, who volunteered some of their time on Saturday and Sunday in doing this, as well as Waste Connections Lemay, for, again, facilitating this great asset for us. And we'll be, again, doing one in the fall as well. And once we get information in terms of, you know, the total tonnage and everything, in terms of the total debris that was collected, we'll share that with you. A week ago Saturday, we had the Seventeenth Annual Parks Appreciation Day, and over a hundred and fifty folks came out to a number of parks and did a wide range of beautification. And so just want to extend our thanks to Mary Dawsworth, our Parks Recreation Director, as well as all those who came out and really put a nice sparkle on our parks. As you know, the state legislature, they were able to get out on time. They finished up on Sunday evening, the twenty-eighth of April. Overall, the City of Lakewood, because of your leadership and all of our efforts down in Olympia, did very, very well. We were able to secure three-point-four million dollars in support of a number of city-oriented projects and initiatives, as well as five hundred, plus five hundred thousand dollars in support of the North Clear Zone, and another seven hundred and nine thousand in support of the Chambers Creek Canyon Trail Project, which is a partnership between both the county and university play. So overall, I'd like to say it was a pretty successful session for us. On the operational front, Interlock and Bridge is going to be closed beginning next Monday from a week, from zero-seven to four in the afternoon, sixteen hundred hours. The primary motivation for that is to make some repairs to the bridge that occurred last year from an accident that occurred out there, as well as just some regular routine maintenance activity. We're also going to try and coordinate the inspection of the bridge. We've got to get divers in the water to do that, so we're working with Pierce County, since they provide that service for us, as well as maybe doing some pavement patching on the, I think it's on the west side of the, west side of the bridge there. So a lot happening next week, but, long story short, the bridge will be closed from zero-seven to sixteen hundred hours. And this morning, we began putting out, if you haven't been down there, we've got these big reader boards alerting folks that next week, again, the area is going to be, is going to be closed and define alternative routes. to be closed and define alternative routes. Last week, PSAC voted to change their meeting schedule to every other month, starting in June two thousand nineteen. So rather than meeting twelve times a year, they're going to meet six times a year. Also, I signed an agreement with the city of Fife last week for the use of the Bearcat in support of the city's special response team, now that we're no longer part of Metro, Metro SWAT. Playground updates, the new Oakbrook Park playground was installed last week, so if you haven't been out there to see that, looks really nice. And our thanks to county council member Doug Richardson for securing the funding for, for, for making that happen. Likewise, a new playground was installed at American Lake Park as well, the week before last. And apparently, some kids have been calling it Pirate Park because the playground equipment resembles a ship with a mast and some pirate paraphernalia on there. So it, it has taken, if you will. The, you know, one of the things that we're always looking at is where we're going to get our next set of grant funding. We seem to be, you know, we're always, you know, proverbial, we're, we're chasing our money that leaves our community and goes to the state and feds and trying to get it back to us. So the Transportation Improvement Board, their applications for funding this year closes in two thousand nineteen. In the June-July time period, they'd be, they have some workshops on kind of the criteria that they're looking for in terms of projects. Right now, the projects that we think will fare well, based on what we've heard in the past from them, is that sidewalk piece and road piece on Lakewood Drive between, you know, Flet Creek and the improvements that we, that we, that we just made last year. Also, a hundredth between Lakeview and South Tacoma Way, including that little short piece along Fortyeth. That's a huge entrance into our downtown area and could certainly use a facelift. The roadway in there is not doing very, very well, so we think that will compete very well. And then another, which we're beginning to experience some challenges, is Custer between Bridgeport and Lakewood Drive. Now, we're not going to get funding for all of them, but hopefully, we can get funding from one of them. But again, that's kind of where we are right now, as we hear more information from TIB. We'll certainly keep the council appraised of that. As we look out into the future, the next round of PSRC funding is next year in two thousand and twenty. Likewise, safe routes to school funding applications are in two thousand and twenty. And then bike pedestrian grants in two thousand and twenty as well. And then those funds, PSRC funds, wouldn't be available until twenty-three and twenty-four. And then the other two latter, funding sources, twenty-one and twenty-two. So there's quite a lag in terms of when we apply, if we're granted the award, and then when we can spend, spend the money. So. Salsan nine-one-one, I know you had a nice joint meeting with the fire board a couple of weeks ago, so we have asked the executive director to come back and try and close the loop on this and have a study session and one final, or a final review, if you will, by the council as part of your study session on May twenty-eighth. And if the council's so inclined, our recommendation would be for you to consider that as part of your June third regular meeting, the changes in governance and alike that was discussed at your joint session, again, with the fire board. The reason that we would like to bring this forward to you end of May, early June, is that we have heard from both the county and Salsan nine-one-one that they're going to be going to the bond market to finance the new Public Safety Communication Center. And they would like to have some certainty on the new governance model and kind of how the, how the organization is run and operated before they go to the market, because that's just going to raise questions and, you know, things could get a little skittish there when they go to the market. Probably not, but it would be just beneficial if all six agencies could take action. So that's kind of what's driving, driving the timeline, the timeline there. So that's why we have put it on your agenda for May twenty-eighth and then, again, if council so inclined, June, June third. The, I emailed you this afternoon, a kind of just a preliminary draft version of a newsletter article from the mayor and the council, really talking about the successes that we've had down in Olympia this, this, this past year. So if you have any feedback, comments, or suggestions on that, please let me know. We're kind of, we're finalizing that. We've, we've got to have a preliminary draft over to our, you know, printing folks by, by Thursday, actually by Wednesday, Thursday time period, so. But again, if you have any questions there, feel free to give me, give me a call. Some other initiatives that, that we're working on, I think I had mentioned to you previously, we had met with University Place, as well as had some conversations with Silicon about having them come under the emergency management umbrella that the city and West Pierce Fire and Rescue has. Right now, both of those, both of those communities have emergency operations services through the county. And given the fact that whenever we do an emergency operations exercise, they're at the table anyways, because we're all here on the west side, so they do have some interest. The city and the fire district have been looking at how that would work. Long story short, we can do it with existing resources for the first year. There might be a need for an additional quarter time FTE on the fire side. However, with all four agencies, we would all save money by actually consolidating and having the economy as a scale of four jurisdictions rather than two jurisdictions. So we're going to be reaching back out to University Place and Silicon on that. And we'll, again, we'll keep you, keep you appraised. Really, at the end of the day, the ball's in their court whether or not they want to be a part, part of our, part of our team. Another thing that, another area that we're looking at, as you know, we have court contracts with DuPont, Silicon and University Place. The contracts have provisions in there that periodically the city will look at, you know, the allocation of those costs and the like. And so Shannon is, has done that. She's looking at that. And so we've developed a couple of options. We're reaching out to Silicon and then DuPont, I'm sorry, and then UP and DuPont. Long story short, it's, it's not a major change in cost, but the city of Lakewood, potentially, we would see a reduction in about a hundred thousand dollars, while the other agencies obviously would see an increase. A lot of that is generated by the fact that the way we, and it's not right or wrong, it's just, again, the way the original contracts were set up and we have learned a lot since then, so that's why we had that provision in there to look at this. But the way it's set up right now is that, you know, when you have a, you get, you get charged, there's an infraction, for example, in Silicon, they get charged for one infraction. That's, that's fine. It's usually done in. However, criminal citations, there could be two, three, four, or five hearings. And the way it's currently set up is that those jurisdictions only pay for one hearing. Well, if there's three, four, or five, really, right now, our perspective is the city is kind of subsidizing that. And so one of the models that Shannon is looking at is to ensure that we all quote-unquote "pay our fair share" on, on that. And so that's the discussion we're going to have with our, with our contracting agencies. So again, it could have resulted in a little additional cost to them, but again, we think it's fair to everybody. Also, it's still a lower cost than they would be paying if they continue with Pierce County District Court. So again, that's a discussion and a dialogue that we're going to have with our contract agencies. And if we were to move forward on this, it would occur incrementally, because not all the contracts with all the agencies expire at the same time. And off the top of my head, I don't know which ones expire first, but they don't all expire at the same time. So it would occur over a one, two, or even a three-year period. And then, lastly, oh, I'm sorry. Also, a project that we have gotten back to is looking at options to annex Camp Murray and/or how to make improvements down at the boat launch in American Lake. And this is a follow-up discussion that the mayor and I had with the commander of, with General Doherty a number of years ago. It would have been put in the back burner, it's been, it's on our work plan, it's on your work plan, but it's been put on the back burner because of other council priorities. We have resurrected it and we're looking at it, so we're kind of coming up to speed internally on what needs to be done here. And so we'll, 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 we'll see where that goes. And so hopefully, later this summer and the fall, we'll have a more comprehensive update for you on that. And of course, we are going to need to work with both Camp Murray, as well as Pierce County on this. The, the, the last update I have is myself and Mr. Buwer, Dave Buwer. We met with UTC, Utilities, Transportation Commission staff, as well as via phone, a representative of the Federal Rail Administration on Friday morning. And this was a follow-up conversation that we had with Washdawt Rail, Amtrak, and Sound Transit back in October regarding the city's concerns around rail safety, the speeding of passenger rail coming through at seventy-nine miles an hour, as well as our concerns over not having enough areas having great separation. And then, of course, the city's initiative to secure funding to do a station, to do an assessment on whether or not an Amtrak station would work here in Lakewood as we look out into the future, not tomorrow, but five, ten, fifteen years. And by the way, those other three agencies were at the table on Friday afternoon as well. So we just wanted to be, get everybody in the same room. We found the feedback from, from the representative from FRA, very, very helpful, when we started talking about our desire to have a train station. He just jumped in and he started talking about, "Yeah, you know, as you see increases in passengers coming up now in that corridor from Vancouver, B.C., all the way down to, you know, Oregon and this and that." He goes, he goes, "Other communities need to be doing this as well." He goes, "Good for you." He goes, "That's great." And he kept, and he was kind of talking over some folks. And he goes, "Yeah," he goes, "that's something we need to be doing." And so we were, Dave and I really appreciated that, that, that comment and, and we got some positive feedback from the Amtrak folks in the room as, as, as well on that. Really, the, the bulk of the conversation, however, was, you know, where are we? We, everybody in that room, in regards to, you know, next steps in terms of Amtrak, you know, running their line along the, along the, along the bypass route. And of course, the critical path item is May twenty-first, when the NTSB board is going to hold their meeting in Washington, D.C. And representatives from, from the state of Washington will be back there at that meeting and, you know, outlining, you know, the outcome and their findings regarding the derailment on seventeen December two thousand, I think it was seventeen December two thousand seventeen? Or eighteen December two thousand? It was either December seventeenth or December, that, that third Monday in December two thousand and seventeen. And that will also include recommendations by the NTSB. However, the gentleman from FRA was quick to point out to the city, he said, "Those are simply recommendations. Neither Washdawt Rail or Amtrak or even Sound Transit has to adhere to any of them." And so we're like, "Okay, fair enough." At the same time, he pointed out that the soonest that Amtrak and Washdawt Rail would be able to reinstitute service on the rail is at least ninety days after the board hearing on May twenty-first. So I just threw it out there. I said, "So Labor Day weekend." And, and what we heard from Washdawt Rail, because they're really the controlling party here, he said, "You know, we just can't commit to that. We don't know if it's going to be in the fall. We don't know if it's going to be in the spring of two thousand and twenty." One thing he did commit to is that they will not open the rail line in the wintertime. So in the November, December, January, or even February timeline, they said, he specifically said winter. So if they are to open it, the soonest would be in the fall. However, if they do plan on moving forward with ever, whatever safety recommendations that the NTSB might have, we could be looking at the spring. Or if they're looking at larger recommendations regarding the alignment of the rail line or this, that, or the other thing, I mean, it could be, I'm just purely speculating here. It could, it could be longer. Also, both, you know, Sound Transit was pretty clear on this, since they own the line, that, you know, there's going to have to, and Washdawt Rail as well, they're going to have to do another community, a huge community outreach regarding safety and education. You know, they did a pretty good job a couple of years on that. But they're going to have to come back and do that, do that over again as well. They did point out that PTC, the Positive Train Control, is in place. So, and it's been tested and retested and they continue to, you know, make sure that that's working. So that's kind of where we are. So again, the critical path date right now is May twenty-first. And I'm sure later this summer, early fall, we will be having a conversation regarding our continued interest in pursuing funding for, again, getting a station here in the Lakewood, in the, in, in the Lakewood area. And then I also thanked, you know, those that were there for their support and the city's initiative, you know, on, on, on that. As far as your calendar goes, I think you heard from board member Paul Wagaman, the Seventh Annual Celebration of Art to Honor Lakes High School Students is actually this Wednesday evening at five-thirty P.M. over at St. Clair's in their main lobby area. Then next Thursday morning is the SSMCP Elected Officials Council event. And breakfast is at seven-thirty with the program from eight to nine-thirty, and that is at Eagles Pride Golf Course. And then the following Friday, May seventeenth, is our annual volunteer appreciation event at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. And that is at seven-thirty in the morning as well, and that'll go to about nine. So.
Dave, is that?
That's a Friday.
Number?
Seventeen May. And then on Saturday, eighteen May, there's a couple of things happening. The Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event down at American Lake Park from nine to noon. And then also, JBLM is going to be having their All-Day Armed Forces Day. So if you have an interest in going to see some cool stuff, JBLM will be open to the public for that. So with that, Mayor, that's my, that's my report.
Questions for the city manager? Who's the fiscal agent for the Chambers Creek Trail Grant?
Yeah, Mayor, it's, I know it's not the city of Lakewood. I believe it's, I'm almost positive, it's, it's University Place, the city of University Place, because it is. It's University Place, because they're, it's in their city, but also, they're taking the lead on hiring, you know, all the folks that have been doing that.
Any other questions for the city manager? We'll move to council comments. Mrs. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while and I've been busy. On the twenty-fifth, I had the opportunity to represent the city at the Seventh Annual Matigan Army Breakfast, was held at the Tacoma Golf and Country Club. Keynote speaker was Secretary of State Kim Wyman. And it was really interesting. She told the story of how, of her connection with the Matigan. And her husband was, was with the Second Ranger Battalion, and they had two boys born in Matigan. So it was well-attended and it was a lot of fun. I got to see a lot of good people. Also, on the twenty-fifth, I attended their Canadian Mess Dress that was held at the Indian Summer Golf Course. It was, they're always fun. On the twenty-seventh, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority held their Legislative Day for Washington, Oregon, and Alaska at the Tacoma Golf and Country Club, and I was one of the panelists. It was very interesting. The hot topic was financial literacy. And that was also a topic at the Mess Dress, but at my table, that we were talking about the financial literacy. So I think there's some opportunities there for some of our local programs, such as the Multicultural Coalition. One of the questions that were asked was, "What were we doing to keep the youth engaged?" So it gave me an opportunity to talk about Youth Council and then give some information about the Youth Summit. And there's another question that gave me an opportunity to talk about our Subarea Plan. So they were really impressed. They really liked what the city of Lakewood is doing and how it's helping the residents as well as our young people, so I was glad to be a part of that. Tomorrow, I will be serving pizza at St. Martin's University for the Operations Red. Wednesday, I will be at Lakes High School. I will be attending the art show at St. Clair. Thursday, I will be at the Lakewood Promise Meeting. And then Saturday, I just got this call this afternoon, Saturday is the eleventh, is the, Saturday, the eleventh, is Joe Ethel Smith Vladek Walk Cancel Walk. It's going to be held at Fort Silicon Park. Registration starts at twelve and the walk begins at one, and the cost is thirty-nine dollars. So she was planning to be here tonight, but she was having some trouble, so she asked if I would share that and asked if we would come and support her. That's it.
Mary, what is that Operation?
Operation.
Thing down in Lacey? What is that?
It's at St. Martin's. It's when they had the recruits.
Yeah. Operation.
Operation Red. Operator.
What day is that again?
That's, well, here, it's... It's tomorrow. Tuesday. Because the other one's up north later, it's up in Seattle. You didn't get the notice?
I didn't get the memo on it. I knew it was coming, but. I served spaghetti last year.
Yeah. That's always fun. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, I will be attending on Wednesday night, the St. Clair Celebration. It's, it's always a neat event. I think there is another art show over at Lakes. They do that Artesia or whatever, but I can't remember the date, so am I be getting those confused? But on Wed- So am I be getting those confused? But on Wednesday, the St. Clair event, which I think is a great, great event. Um, Parks Appreciation Day was wonderful. The weather was great. We just really couldn't have, um, had a better day. Um, pulling Scotch broom up, up on the hill, and I ended up doing it for the, the three hours, and I'm whoa, and I'm still got the calluses to show for it. And so, um, enjoyed that. And I think we got a decent turnout overall, it sounded like, from your work. So I was, I was pleased with that. Um, just, just a comment. I was, uh, did the EFN Hunger Walk on Saturday in Fort Silicon Park also. And again, it was a beautiful day, so that always helps. But really, what really showed was the improvements in the park over the last few years. Now, I think that if they had been there last year, they would have been on the new walk around the lake, which we took two walks around the lake. I didn't run, note that, I'm willing to admit that. Uh, I did the walk. And the two walks around the lake, so last year, they would, we would have had the new, um, walk around Wahop in. But we wouldn't have fixed the road, because I think the road got fixed last summer. So we had the brand-new road, and we also had, and they were using the gathering place. So, because they had a band playing there and the whole, the whole bit, and then they, and right at that same spot, they had all the booths up for various groups and whatnot. So, you know, we just, and, and the park really looked great. I mean, really, really well-kept up, but the amenities continue to improve. So if you had, now, I, that's the first year I've done that walk, but if you had been there three or four years, you would have been on the old Wahop, you would have been on the old road, and with no gathering spots. So, yeah, or the, in the old parking lot. So, so just in the last three years, they, somebody going there over the last three or four years would have just seen these incredible improvements to that property. And again, on, on a, on a beautiful Saturday, there was a lot going on there. So I hate to end on a bad note.
And don't do it.
But I am going to end on a bad note. Lights. Are my lights in yet on... Huh? You're working with TPU. Okay. So they've been in there since January, and we want to do more lights in that area. We seem to have problems. So, um, I'm going to start asking about it every week. And at some point, do we need to start action against TPU? They're a public utility. We're a customer. They have to provide service at some point. Is there, I mean, is this a legal issue, or is this a personnel issue on our part? Or is it a personnel issue on our, on their part? I mean, at what stage here do we have to get engaged at a higher level to get this thing done? Okay. Thank you.
And when you're talking about Fort Silicon Park, don't forget replacement of the Forest Service entry site. Mr. Brenstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, this is, uh, my first meeting in four weeks, um, since, uh, I missed two meetings during the, the trip to Gimhe, and then there was a, a week without a meeting, and so I'm, so I'm here to be able to go and do that. But, um, the, the, the trip to Gimhe City was, um, um, something, something well worth doing, and was, uh, we were really well-received, um, that the President of the Sister Cities Association, a representative from Pierce College, and my wife and I went there to represent, um, Lakewood. Um, and we had a, uh, we were shown a good time for, uh, four days. The, um, um, the, the key event that, that was timed the visit was, uh, what they call a Gaia Festival. And Gaia was one of the traditional, in the, during the first half of the first millennium, was one of the four kingdoms that were on the Korean Peninsula. And this was, um, in, in, at the time, Gimhe was the capital of that kingdom to be able to go and do that. And so they had a rather elaborate festival that, um, was somewhat like a four-day summer fest with lots of entertainment and things going on, but with lots of historical reference. Um, and they have done a lot to preserve archaeological history, uh, that goes, that goes back with them. Um, so I learned a lot about that, but I also learned a lot about the modern Gimhe City, uh, some of which, which was surprising to me because I had some conceptions that were not quite right. Um, it is a city of 550,000 people, um, and so to that extent, it is different than us. Um, but it has essentially been a city in its current form only since 1995. So it's approximately the same age as us, that prior to that, the region was a county, um, and, uh, you know, has made, been made the transitions from, from rural to, 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 to being highly urbanized. Uh, they have a city council and a strong mayor system. Uh, their city council is 23. Um, and, uh, they are elected for four-year terms, uh, that are not staggered. So every four years, everybody on the council is up for reelection, and I was told by the council members that the majority of council members don't get reelected. Uh, that, uh, and to some extent, that is, four years is enough for, for some of them to be able to go and, 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 and do that. Um, that, uh, they have an interesting system regarding public comment. Uh, the way that their council works, it's, uh, the, uh, they don't have any public comment at their plenary sessions, but they have a system of where any citizen can submit a petition. And this is kind of an oriental, uh, historical tradition of where you could petition the ruler or someone to be able to go and do that. And you submit a written petition, uh, regarding an issue and ask whatever to any one of the council members. And that council member is obligated to research it and present it on your behalf to the entire council, which will either take the matter and refer the matter to one of the four standing council committees, could act on it, could, uh, decide that, that they're not going to do something with it, but then, or refer it to an appropriate part of the city staff. And I asked, I said, doesn't that get abused? And they said, no, because there are mechanisms to take issues that need to be handled by the city staff, correctly, the city staff. It, it really deals mostly with policy concerns to do that. And they get about 40 a year, uh, that, 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 that come through, through, through that process. But that it takes the place of the public comment sessions that, that we would have. Um, their concerns, uh, they're, they're very concerned with developing their parks and open spaces and, and, and being able to go and do that, and have a lot of emphasis on that. They're extremely focused on economic development, as we are, um, to be able to go and do that. And one thing that I thought that I found interesting is, like us, they have adopted a incentive program for new businesses that hire employees with wages that meet a certain threshold. Um, their plan has built, developed a little bit different than ours, in that a business can't, because it's, uh, similar, because it's like a $500 per, for each new employee that you sustain for a year, but that it is, um, you can apply for it between your second and fifth year of being in business in the city. So you have to start at a new business, kept it viable for at least two years, three years, actually, and then you can apply based on the number of new jobs that you've created, uh, to get this stipend, to be able to go and do that. And so I thought, you know, it's very, very similar to strategies that, that we have, that we have looked at. Um, that, um, yeah, I've, I've had displayed over here on the little table over here, you can't see down by Mary, but the, uh, the mayor and the, and, and, and the city presented a porcelain plate that's somewhat reddish, um, in color that's there, that is a, uh, traditional and is regional, uh, porcelain, um, item that's there. The reddish color is, recognizes the fact that back in the first millennium, that, that this is an area that had a lot of iron in the, in the soil and in that, to that. And one of the reasons it became one of the four, um, countries that, and, and kingdoms at, at that time was, is that it had, it, it had a lot of iron, and so a lot of people from Japan and China and that, and they came there to get iron implements and things made and, and be able to go and do that. That, uh, the other items are, there, there's two teacups that are also porcelain, and those were gifts to us from the, the city council, um, where they, um, we, we had a chance to meet with the, a panel of city council members. Five of them met with us, and we talked about things that, uh, that we shared and what we thought we might, might, might be able to do together in the future. Um, and the last item over there are some very elaborate bookmarks, and those, those are a gift to us from NJ University, and that's the major university that is in Gimhe City. It's, uh, it's, it's a private university, not a, not a public university, uh, and it is, it's, it's, um, primarily, uh, it's medical school is, is real well-known, but it is also the equivalent in Korea of, of the genealogy program in Salt Lake City. They have pages and books and books of, of old family registers of things, and, and essentially they're particularly focused on the, uh, the, 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 the Heil and Kim families, so that if you're in, in, somehow in one of those family trees, there's probably some documents there that they have, and they got a chance to, to go through and look for it. And while we did not look for, uh, actual documents that related to my wife, they were probably there, uh, to be able to go and do that. And there were some very busy graduate students who were sitting there in front of computers, digitizing, you know, the thousand-year-old records, uh, that, that, that came with books, to be able to go and do that. Um, they are going to be sending a delegation to our summer fest. Um, their, their deputy mayor is going to be the, heading that delegation. There'll be a council member with it, and I think that there'll perhaps be five folks. So, um, I think, Mr. Mayor, the Mrs. Lackady plans to get with you regarding discussions about itinerary and, and, and what we might do when we get something more familiar, exactly, specific about dates. Uh, and they, and they also have indicated that they're, they want to bring some proposals because it was 10 years between us exchanging visits. Uh, Mayor Richardson was the last person to, 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 to visit there. And they, in fact, had a, an evergreen tree that was planted there at their city hall, uh, commemorating his visit there to do that, that they, that they showed us to be able to go and do that. And I'm going to look into, because their city tree is the Ginkgo, and I don't know whether Ginkgo is thrive in our climate or whether we would, could find one, but it might be something that we could.
Petrified ones over by, uh...
Yeah. Yes, along the Columbia there, uh, yeah, I, I know. But we'll, we'll, we'll have, have to see. So, um, in any event, um, uh, good people with many of the same interests for their city that, 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 that we have for ours, uh, a strong desire that it not be 10 years again between our, 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 our interactions to be able to go and do that. And, um, I, I would just say that I was really honored because they had representatives from six cities from around the world there invited to, to, to be able to go and do that. They had a reception, uh, dinner where the delegations from all those cities were, were there on the very first night before the opening ceremony of the festival. Um, and, uh, so with, with, with all the need for interpreters and things, you, you, you couldn't fit that many people at a table. But, um, I, I was honored that I got to actually sit at the table with, with the mayor and the ambassador from India to South Korea. Um, and Gimhe has a very significant relationship with India because the first queen of, of the king that established, uh, the Kingdom of Gaia was, was from India and was, traveled from India to, to, for, for that marriage and being able to go and do that. So, um, it's a, an interesting place, and, uh, we did present them a gift from us to the, to their mayor, and it was, uh, something from the, the Northwest Store, which was a carving that was indicative of the cultures that were here in this area, that, that 2,000 years ago, to be able to go and do that. Um, and, uh, that was well-received. Well, since I've been back, I attended the Parks Appreciation Day, and, uh, I think got to go to the law enforcement memorial, uh, ceremony that was here, uh, two events that were very different, but also very well-done, uh, and, uh, went on off. And, um, I am planning to go down to St. Martin's tomorrow evening, uh, for, for that event, and there's a variety of things that goes on. But that anyway, that, that, thank you for giving me the time to speak about my trip.
Thank you for representing us well. Ms. Barth.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Brenstetter, I have a question. If they have 23 council members, are they divided into different districts, or are they random? How does that work there?
Um, this, their, their, their city chire is interesting. Uh, they, they have seven districts, um, and that there, and then there are four council members that are elected, which they call proportionally, but they're at large, folks. Uh, the, the number 23 is interesting because they don't really have 23 positions. Uh, what they do is they have a formula that's based on, the, the council has grown from 18 to 10, to do that. And that, each district, depending upon how many, what your population is, then at the next election, that's how many council members you are allowed to elect. So it is, it is, the number on the council changes with each four-year election as well, uh, by, uh, by, by a few numbers to be able to go and do that.
Interesting. Yeah, I wonder how they get anything done with 23 people. Um, so I also thank you for that, and thank you for representing us. I attended the Officers Memorial, uh, last week, and it was very moving, as it always is. Um, and I just wanted to say, just for the record, how proud I am of the youngsters. I think that is such a great program, and they represent us... I think that is such a great program, and they represent us so well in the city. And so just, just wanted to say thank you to them and congratulations to them, and I hope, you know, I look at them and I think, these are our future leaders. I watch them interact with the representatives, the liaisons to the various committees, and I just, they're just great kids, and I'm just real proud of them. So, thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday morning, I attended the first Cooperative Use Agreement meeting between the city and Clover Park School District. I thought that Mary Dodsworth did a very nice job of outlining how she would like to see this, this work go. I, I thought the district met in good faith. I, I think we're gonna get this nailed down. I think Mary hit it on the head when she said, "This isn't hard. We should keep this simple, and let's just remember it's theirs and not yours." And I was, I was very pleased with the outcome, and we have another meeting scheduled for, I believe, next Tuesday morning at zero nine thirty. On a smaller note, I noticed the signage on the corner of Far West Drive in Stillicum is done, and it looks good. It makes that corner just, you don't see the scrub behind it, you see that sign, and I like that. And then on a personal note, when I married sixteen years ago, I acquired a stepson, and raising him was a challenge, as in, we didn't finish high school, we dotted heads with our stepfather, you get the picture. I am now the proud stepdad of a United States Marine, and I think he has gone back to school, he's earned his high school diploma, and he just finished Marine Corps basic training, and we're just waiting to see where he goes next. But the letter I got from him about, "I'm gonna be a good Marine dad," all right, that sounds good to me. Thank you.
Now you have to remember that it's not Hua, it's Ura.
Gotcha.
Mr. Whalen?
Thank you. Let me get this thing going. I had the pleasure of being towed around to look at all things great in Lakewood in terms of recent economic development activity on Friday with our city manager and Ms. Newton and Mr. Buwer, and if you haven't had the chance to really kind of get out and see some of the new stuff, it's, it's fascinating, heartwarming, and very positive about all the new stuff in Woodbrook and Springbrook and even some of the things going on in Stillicum and certainly in the downtown core. So I appreciate the opportunity and lots of good stuff going on, as well as all the streetscape. Arts Commission, I want to give you a little glimpse. I met with them tonight as a liaison, and as you know, they're working on the public art proposals that will be hopefully coming for us for selection for the Colonial Center project. They started off with twelve proposals, and they went through a scoring rubric that they will present to you. That scoring rubric was with a fairly broad spectrum of community folks, and they went on down three, and they selected one to recommend to the council. I wanted to kind of let you see a peek of this now because my hope is, given this construction schedule and the artist's schedule, that we might put a bug in the city manager's ear to maybe get it on a sooner study session than later, if we can, just because if the council's inclined to adopt it, then we can get it going because it's about a twelve-to-sixteen week construction process, and that puts us really close, yeah.
Art?
I know, I know, well, yeah. Hey, you know, we. I know, exactly, I know, it's.
Twelve to sixteen.
Yeah, because of all the stuff going on. So let me give you a little sense of who this woman is that the Arts Commission proposed. Her name is Perry Howard. She's, you know, she's got a huge background in doing public work art. Next one if you can there. Her concept is a little bit of, it's called Upon Reflection, and the first page that was on the screen talked about the reflection of Lakewood past and present, the reflection of Lakewood's diversity, the reflection of Lakewood in terms of the water and the trees and the nature. And so these are some of the concept drawings. Again, the RFP went out to talk about the Colonial Center Plaza Project with regard to some taller columnar feel as you would come into the project, and that is what each of the artists kind of came back with. So this gives you a little bit of a schematic drawing. Next one there. You know, the height is upwards of ten to twelve to fourteen feet, depending on the base. This shows some concrete, large plinth bases. We've asked her to give us a option for large natural boulders because there was concerns about kids being able to climb on them and fiddle around with the art if they were too blocky like that, so she's come back with some beautiful rock boulders. There was input from all of us to the Arts Commission to try to include a water feature component to it, and she will do that in terms of either the bubbler out of the rocks or something that's gonna be sustainable, easy to maintain, and possible. And that goes to the nature of the building process, because they gotta build a basin for the water. So Sally's been in touch with, Mary has been in touch with Public Works to just chat about that. Apparently, they're not from Boston, these guys, they can't get it done in quick enough time. So go through the next a little bit here. Anyway, again, these are kind of rough sketches a little bit, but the theory is, if you want to review the number one proposed project sooner than later, we should get it on the study session so we can do it and maybe bring the artist in, she can talk about it in further detail. She's really talented. She followed up with Sally Martinez in like incredible depth on all the different questions that the Arts Commission had for her about certain components of the work to make it as close to what they glean as your request for them to come up with a recommendation as possible. So, there you go. It was a good process. Yep.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Actually, the student who is a member of the Arts Commission passed that around at the.
Oh, good.
Today.
What did they think?
Well, they, you know, they were fine with it. I mean, it's kind of like, I enjoy it. The idea is it's gonna be on both sides of the entryway, or in this picture, they've got it more, I mean, the idea that the cars will go through there, or will it be on somewhere else?
They're fifty-two feet apart from one another.
Fifty-two feet, okay.
In the entrance area. So if I had the schematic of it, you could see a little bit better, but it's only on one end of the street, and that's the end off of Gravely Lake Drive. It's in that end.
Perfect.
And there is water and power plumbed to both as part of our construction budget anyway.
Right, there's spots.
So there's at least one spot. I mean, okay.
What are the other, what were the other proposals?
There was one proposal, the top three. One was kind of interesting. It was, it was called Spirit Faces of Lakewood, and it had large aluminum, highly polished aluminum poles or steel, stainless steel poles. It would kind of go up and frame kind of a little bit of a canopy, like a tree canopy over the entrances, and on each one of the poles, there was a large bronze face, and there would be like six of them, and they would, the features would reflect the various diverse communities of Lakewood, like a Native American feature, an African American, a Samoan American, or a Korean American, you know, those kind of, just the features as best you could without being too schlocky, but nice. And they would have the ability to have sunlight shine through the facial features and create shadows on the ground for people to walk under. And then the guy had incorporated a water feature where he would, it would be able to be shut off at certain temperatures, but it would mist through the faces, so when the sun shines, you get this interesting misting of the water around the faces at night and during the sun. So, that was kind of number, number three. Number two was, number two. There was an artist that had kind of Northwest animals in bronze that he did, that were kind of whimsical, and they would be placed on top of boulders on either side, they were kind of a whimsical sort of thing. He didn't really have a water component to his, and so he got scored less. Those are the, those are the top three.
That's the Whalen factor.
Yeah, well, we can, well, that was the points on the thing. If you want me to have them include top three anyway for a study session, we certainly can do that. But they were thinking this one was sent, it was so high in terms of the overall votes vis-à-vis the other two that they wanted to move forward, but certainly it's council's direction to bring in whatever they want.
I'm trying to see the link between this and trying to be the Colonial Center and historic and maintain the character.
Yeah, pull up the sheet.
I don't, I don't see how it ties.
First page. Well, she kind of explains a little bit here in the first page. Go to the first page. Uh, no, let's see, this page, go to the next one there. And she kind of explains what she's doing here. Yeah. They look a little bit like trees or a boat, depending on how you look at them, they're kind of different looking, and so she was trying to incorporate a little bit of the, you know, there's a little bit of Indian canoe to it, there's a little bit of tree to it, there's a little bit of, you know, it's, again, it's imaginative sort of thing. There was one that didn't get scored highly, had the colonial flavor to it, and these women did some really cool, again, very well-known for public art, these cool pineapples that were in steel, that had shimmering pieces of it, and they had water kind of come out of the pineapples because in colonial days, that was a simple welcome, and they thought the entrance to the city would have this welcoming.
It was this feel, it was this.
Yeah, so there you go.
The giant pineapple.
The giant pineapple, yeah.
Charleston. It was actually, it was actually, it was actually the sea captain's wife signaled to her boyfriend that the ship had come in.
There was that one.
That's the back channel explanation of it.
Those were kind of cool, but they didn't get, it didn't get a lot of traction with the committee for whatever reason, so, I don't know. I kind of liked it, and I liked pineapples. This one was the top vote getter for whatever reason by far, and, and then we added, we asked her to add in a budgetary item for more of the water feature design and to add in the natural boulders as opposed to the concrete, because we thought there's so much concrete out there, that it might be nice to have more of a natural feel with the columns. Yeah. Anyway, let me know what your thought is, and I just think the sooner the better because otherwise it's gonna be, gonna be a real delayed installation.
You ask it for thought? I, I like what I saw. I could see the canoe image as soon as you said it, Jason. But I would like to see that second one, the faces, the sun, the water, because Lakewood, I mean, I'm trying to keep in mind, bear in mind, balance the history of the Colonial Center, what it stands for, but there's always been a, how do I put this? An eclecticness to the people who live in this area. And I think something like that, if we're going to make this welcoming, we're gonna make this part of the city center, that seems to speak a little more to that when you have the face of, say, a Korean American or an African American or a Native American. I like that theme because of the eclectic quality of this area, and I would, I would like to see that, but I will, I take your point. I personally like simplicity in my art, and this first artist nailed it. I mean, I can, if, that, I want to see what the other one was up against, so to speak.
You bet. Thoughts or comments?
I'd like to see that one for the same reasons, I think.
Anything else?
Very good. So, not to be overlooked, the Boston Bruins prevailed three to zero today and make the Eastern Conference Finals, just to improve the mood of our city manager. Related to us indirectly, the city of DuPont prevailed in its request to the legislature to appropriate $3.9 million to build out Stillicum DuPont Road, basically from the new freeway interchange to Amazon, or maybe a little farther to Integrity Gate in the Amazon area. And as I jokingly indicate, the proposal is to have Washot do it, so it would be the state building a county road on federal property for the benefit of the city. What could go wrong? But it seems, it seems like it'll work, and the good news for Lakewood there is that, you know, that is the back way into town, so part of it would be improved, and it also takes that funding need off the plate for competition when and if Son of Commute Act ever gets funded, that DSET program, so we don't have the direct local competition. Another related, county-related item, 123rd Street Water Line. I wanted to commend the Lakewood Water District who has bent over backwards in an attempt to gain, grant authority and coordinate putting the upgrade to the water line in in conjunction with the road project rather than tearing it up later at quite a bit greater expense. The county executive is proposing to fund that improvement in the supplemental budget, but the timing isn't quite right, so we're a little out over our skis on that. Lakewood Water District is gonna take a little bit of a risk, it looks like, and start that project on the come, they already have it designed, it's gonna get a price, they had an emergency ordinance so they could. No, the county exec is proposing it in the supplemental budget because it enhances the value of the Lakeview pit. It's gonna have to be paid for, and it's gonna cost upwards of $400,000 or more to do after the fact, and it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty, twenty-five to two hundred and fifty to do it with the project. So it directly relates to the price of the county's property that's for sale and the saleability. And so we'll see how that goes, but I just wanted to note Lakewood Water District is trying to make it happen. Or as Randy Black said, if it doesn't work, it might be his last project. Deputy Mayor, and I were in on an interview with Becky Newton and the city manager with Business View Magazine on the thirtieth, so we look forward to a draft of their article coming out. It's a follow-up of an article about a year ago, I think, I believe, on Lakewood and what's, what we've got accomplished and how things are changing, why we should do business On the first, I met with the state auditor's representative on the intake, basically a meeting that says there's nothing to see here, but if there is, I'll tell you about it. And I had the privilege of speaking at the Pierce County Law Enforcement Memorial on the second, at which time we were treated to a performance by the Congregational Church of America in Samoa, and I was introduced to the choir director and the pastor afterwards. They are interested in performing at Summerfest and Martin Luther King, and they're good. That is Dan and Lua Pritchard's church. It originated on JBLM and is now based out of Tacoma. So Ms. Moss might bring that back to the committee for consideration, because they had a lot of energy and have some talent there. You need an executive session? Ten minutes? We will recess into executive session for approximately ten minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101. I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation for which the agency, the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become party, and public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. We are not expected to take any action when we return. Executive session will commence at nine forty-five and continue until nine fifty-five. We're in recess.